You probably didn't want to hear me talking.
All right.
It is five o'clock. I would like to call to order the Plan and Zone Commission meeting of today, August 4th. I'd like to remind everybody in the audience that we need to have your cellphones turned off, as it could interfere with our audio communication recording. Anybody that comes up to speak needs to identify yourself and where you're from, your address, and we'll get this meeting going with our public hearing. I would like to thank everybody in attendance, the commissioners, either via remote or in person. I appreciate your time. Look forward to a fairly short meeting. We've got limited agenda tonight. We'll start off with public hearing roll call. Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Here.
Lambers? Susan, I saw it. Okay, there you are. I saw it on the screen. Med? Johnson?
I'm present.
Tomlin here. Ingram?
Present.
Hepner? Bransgard? Reinards?
Here.
Manus?
Here.
And Garrington?
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. First public, first and only public hearing case is REZ 20-06, request of Malwa, M-A-L-W-A-L-L-C. Located at 4425 West Locust Street, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 Corridor Commercial, to permit retail alcohol sales. Staff?
Okay, so this is the public hearing. So as the chairman stated, this request was brought to us by Malwa LLC to facilitate the sale of retail sale alcohol. They currently sell beer and wine. They'd like to also sell hard liquor. Current zoning is C1 Neighborhood Commercial that the property, under the rezoning request, is highlighted in the red. Is adjacent to additional C1 properties, RMF Multi-Family Residential, and then EMI's Park over here is the special use open space. The nearest C2 Corridor Commercial District is approximately 1,800 feet to the east. Future land use is Residential General, which is mostly residential, within walking distance of half-mile to scattered neighborhood compatible commercial services, as well as neighborhood uses like schools, churches, corner stores, and generally oriented along urban corridors. Neighborhoods are typically designated as a whole. Existing neighborhoods would anticipate to maintain their existing character in terms of land use, mix, and density, with the exception along edges and transition areas with higher intensity, where higher intensity may be considered. So far, we have sent out our property owner notice, the 200-foot area as shown in red. We placed a sign on the property, and we held a neighborhood meeting on July 21st with no property owners attending. It was only city staff, Chairman Ingram, and some city council members, as well as the petitioner and his staff. And then we published the public hearing notice on July 24th. So the new zoning ordinance resulted in some downzoning along Locust Street to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, and the new code restricts, sorry for the typo, retail alcohol sales to zones C2 and above. Both actions were approved as a way to enhance neighborhood compatibility, specifically with the goal of reducing over time the prevalence of retail alcohol sales outlets along Locust Street Corridor. The existing license allows the existing owner to continue to sell beer and wine, and it's considered illegal nonconforming use, as is the use was allowed, the use is an unallowed use within a zoning district prior to the adoption of the new code in 2019. However, a nonconforming use, increased intensity, would not be allowed within that zoning district, hence the request for a C2 rezoning request. So the next steps in the planning and the process is a vote before a Plan and Zoning Commission on August 18th, and it would appear on the public hearing for Committee of the Whole on September 2nd. There is no staff recommendation at this time, as this is the public hearing.
Thank you, Laura. Commissioners, any questions at this time, prior to hearing from the petitioner? Seeing none. Would the petitioner or the petitioner's representative please step forward and explain your petition, and take some questions if necessary? Please identify yourself.
Sorry, hold on one second.
Hold on just a second. Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. William McCullough actually resides at 4030 Jersey Ridge Road in Davenport. I'm legal counsel for Malwa LLC. The Malwa LLC recently purchased this property on 4425 West Locust Street. That location, if anyone's familiar with it, has been there for a number of years, you know, prior to the rezoning that Laura described just a few minutes ago. That location, where it's at, is almost on the way out of town, so to speak. There's a need for the ability for the owners to be able to sell a variety of goods and services in order to stay in business. The convenience store gasoline business is one where they're not making money really against, for the gasoline portion of it, because that's so intense competitively that any profit or ability to stay in business is only there because of the other products or services they're able to offer. So they're asking for the ability to expand, to have the alcohol sales, which, without any restrictions, under a regular liquor license, like most other locations do throughout the city. The owners themselves are owner, own other locations within Davenport, where they provide these same services, so they're very familiar with handling the alcohol sales as well. So I'd be willing to take any questions, if anybody has questions about that.
For a point of clarification, this is the Shell Station across from EMI's, correct?
Express Lane, yes.
Oh, Express, but is it not a Shell, or?
Yes, it's a Shell station, yeah.
Well, I was just wanting to let my commissioners know, if they haven't been out there, which property we're referring to.
That's, yeah. It's a...
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's a well-managed, well-maintained property out there. Is one where they have, as I said, it's been there for a number of years, and people are in the neighborhood are very familiar with it.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you, does anybody have any questions at this time? Any questions from the remote people? Seeing none. Thank you. Would anybody else like to step forward in favor of this petition? Please do so now. Final call? Seeing none. Would anybody like to speak in opposition? Please step forward and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Holt. I am the owner of 4401 West Locust Street. We're exactly east of the Shell Station, as counsel said, confirmed as the lawyer. This business has been in business for a long time. We have been in business for possibly four years now. We took over the old Eagles Club, and we have worked effortlessly to improve this property. He is correct that the business has been in business for a while. I don't see any reason why they need to add additional services to it. I wouldn't have assumed that he would have not boughten the property on assumption that he's going to be able to sell liquor and alcohol. But there are areas already that sell alcohol in the area. I think this area is constantly battled by the multi-house living units in this area. We have, again, worked effortlessly, we have a garden center in this area. We've worked very hard to beautify the area, the corner especially. We're constantly battling debris, as far as liquor bottles, little fireball bottles, different things of that nature, that I think would only take down this area. I feel another issue would be jaywalking. The other gas station has a crosswalk, there's a stoplight there. People can get across very safely. There's a constant battle from our exit and our entrance point to people jaywalking from the multi-units across. I feel that adding this liquor service to this area would only add to that traffic, and create ultimately a safety issue, because there is no safety there, stoplight there as well. So, again, I'm all in favor of someone bettering their business, but I think in this particular case, it's not a good choice for the neighborhood, just because I did reach out as well to, to the managers of the multi-house using units around that area, and they are concerned as well. They said they're always constantly battling the area. They're trying their hardest, it's always an uphill battle, and I just feel adding something to it would take away, and we'd ultimately be taking a step backwards in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in opposition? Does the commission have any additional questions, or any questions? I have one of staff. Laura, I don't know if you could look into this statement that the counsel for the petitioner made. If I remember correctly what he stated, and he can clarify himself, is that he made it sound as if the majority of other convenience stores in Davenport are able to sell liquor, and I question that. I'd like to know if staff could look into that and really fine-tune what percentage, or whether that's an accurate statement. Is, am I portraying what you said correctly, or?
Well, the...
Please, please step up.
Yeah, the owners of Malwa LLC own other locations where they are able to sell liquor, as well as other alcohol products, with their convenience store gas stations.
But that was prior to the zoning change of 2019.
No, no, they currently own other locations in Davenport where they're able to do what we're proposing to do.
But they were grandfathered in because they already sold liquor prior to the zoning change of 2019. They haven't changed it since that.
Well, no, what I'm saying is they own, they own other gas station convenience stores within the city limits of Davenport, where they're able to do that.
And I understand that, but at the same time, they didn't get that ability to sell the liquor products after the zoning change of January 1, 2019.
That I can't tell you.
Maybe...
I can look into specifics to Malwa.
Maybe staff can look into that, too.
So, just for clarification, Chairman, is it just the Malwa LLC liquor license?
No, I'd actually like to see...
Yeah, he wants to know if they're, what the percentage is for the whole city, which...
And maybe you need to provide staff with the addresses of the other Malwa LLC locations.
We can, I think we would have records of...
I would think.
Yeah.
I was trying to lessen your load.
Oh, well, it wouldn't be my load.
Okay.
I will try. I don't know for sure if that's something we are able to do, to compare total number of gas stations, and if they have liquor licenses or not, but we can look into that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just jump on what you said. I think that's a great idea. It seems like this issue is going to be, has been, and will be popping up a lot more with the new ordinance, with what's allowed and not allowed, and what's not a special use and things like that. So maybe when these come up, that information maybe should also become part of the staff report in the future, wouldn't it? Because again, I think we've seen, I want to say this is the third one that we've seen recently.
Second or third.
Yeah, so, again, I just, I just get a feeling this is, I think it's good, and I like the fact that they are popping up and coming in front of the city like this. So, again, just the more data we can have to get an idea of what's out there, I think the better, so.
So you would like to see, and so in this instance, how many other gas stations also sell beer, wine, and liquor?
Convenience stores, correct?
Convenience stores specifically?
I think so. Or in this, maybe even to fine-tune it in this, in this instance, or these instances where they're, they're needing to rezone to allow it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So the ones that are currently grandfathered in?
Yes, exactly. Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Scott, would you like to say something?
I just would like to make a comment that I do not believe that their current licensing system distinguishes between a convenience store or a liquor store. It's basically, it's done by licenses, whether it's a Class E or whatever the label is.
Understood. Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Garrington?
Um, if I, I've been to that gas station, I've gotten gas there, as a matter of fact, but just down the road, maybe a few hundred meters, is another gas station convenience store that also sells liquor. What kind of license are they under?
In terms of liquor license?
Yeah, they were grandfathered in. They were already selling liquor prior to the zoning ordinance change.
Right. So, there's several... Yeah, there are several liquor stores in the area, then, are already?
Correct.
Plus Hy-Vee farther on down.
Correct. Thank you. Any additional questions? Did the petitioner wish to come forward? No? In that case, we will close this petition, and it will be back before us. REZ 20-06 will be back before us at our next meeting with a recommendation from staff on August 18th. Same time, same location. If you would like to attend, we'd appreciate it. That would be our final agenda item. We will move on, we will close the public hearing and move on to our regular meeting agenda. Roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Here.
Lambers? Med? Johnson?
I'm here.
Tomlin here. Ingram?
Present.
Hepner? No signs up there, okay. Bransgard? Reinards?
Here.
Manus?
Here.
And Garrington?
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Secretaries, report? No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Report the city council activity, Laura.
Okay, so there are three items that have been approved since we last met on June 30. It was the final plat for Terrace Ridge Park 10th Edition, which was from 2019. And then the final plat for Animal Vet Care, Vet Care Center First Edition was also adopted. And then the preliminary plat for Casey Kimberly Hills Edition, they elected to, to, this was one that came through together as, at the last meeting, as both preliminary and final, but they moved forward with only the preliminary at the time. And then, so the final will be going through city council at a later date.
Thank you, Laura. Secretaries, report?
Second.
The secretary's report has been moved and seconded as, as published. All in favor, signify by aye or a sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will remain as, as printed. Report of comprehensive plan, Laura, is there anything?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Zoning activity, we have no activity. We have one subdivision item, that would be case number F20-07, request of John Weiser for a final plat of Weiser Historic Beer Garden Edition on 9.111 square feet, more or less, located at the northeast corner of East 11th and Mounds Street, being 1107 Mounds Street, plat to contain one commercial lot. Staff, is that yours, Scott?
Oh, I can speak on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Laura?
It's a Laura show today.
Oh, wait, wait a second. Do I have, and I so moved, do I have a motion, or do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, sorry for that. Case number F20-07, go, or go ahead.
Okay, so this, John Weiser owns the 11th Street Precinct, which is in this, these two buildings that are connected here. He has acquired the Pocket Park here and is extending it to a beer garden on its property. Because the addition is going across the property line, it required a subdivision. So that's, that's why we're bringing it to you. It's currently zoned Seaview Village of East Davenport as future land use is commercial node. There's the plat. It's a fairly simple one. It's just under 10,000 square feet. And, I mean, there were no staff comments for the technical review, and met all of our requirements. Staff finds the plat conforms with the comprehensive plan for Davenport 2035, and the plat achieves consistency with our subdivision requirements. Staff recommend, recommends the city Plan and Zoning Commission forward F20-07 to city council with a recommendation for approval.
And I need to amend my motion. There were two conditions, two findings, I guess. So I'd like to say, taking into account the two findings that the city recommends to move with approval. Could I have a second? Thank you. Now it is open for discussion. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Seeing none. Final call for questions? Roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin?
Schneider? Lambers?
She says yes.
Thank you. Med?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes? Reinards?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
And Garrington?
Upstein?
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. That would conclude the subdivision activity. We'll move on. We do have one additional item. It is a request for a floodplain variance. It's case number F, as in Frank, PV 20-02, the request for a flood variance to allow the construction of a UV disinfection system below base flood elevation at 2606 South Concord Street. Strand and Associates, on behalf of the city of Davenport, is the petitioner. Staff recommends the Plan and Zone Commission approve the request as proposed. The variance request also requires Iowa Department of Natural Resources approval before commencement. If I remember right, I think there were three conditions?
Um, there were findings.
Finding, oh, findings, correct. And I would so move.
Second.
Second.
We have, it's been seconded for discussion, Laura?
Okay, and then we have Ethan Yen on GoToMeetings, who's with Strand and Associates, who can also speak to any questions you might have. So there is an administrative order in place for the city to comply with some DNR requirements?
Laura, could you move your mic a little closer? It's kind of hard.
That better?
Yes.
Okay. So are you fixing my thing? Okay. So, hold on just a second. Am I down really low? Thank you. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So just a little background to explain what's happening. The city has an administrative order with the Iowa DNR to do some things to address the water pollution control plant, which is our sewage treatment plant, it's a regional plant for the Iowa Quad Cities. One of those components is to construct this UV disinfection system before water is discharged into the Mississippi River. In order to do that, it needs to be at a certain height for gravity. So when they're constructing the system, the, the, I have another slide that will show it. The UV actually needs to touch the water, so that, like, all the mechanical pieces associated with that are also, at least partly, below base flood elevation. Chapter 15.44 of the city code is our flood damage prevention ordinance, and it just doesn't fit into the, a box. That ordinance, ordinance is mostly meant for standard commercial, industrial, and residential developments, not for something like this. We use the term of functionally dependent use, so it needs to be where it is in order to work. So on your screen, you can see a general outline. The building is right there. Oh, you can't see my mouse. It's just, and so they're going to bring, they're going to do some grading, so that the main floor, where people will be, will be above base flood elevation, but because there's enclosure, it's considered a basement, and it doesn't meet the definition of, of the lowest floor, so it's still considered a basement, and it wouldn't need to be elevated to one foot above base flood elevation, and they just can't do it with the design. So here you can see a cross-section of the building. So the top of the bottom floor in these plans is at 556.2, based, base flood elevation is 563.75, and they're supposed to protect to one foot above base flood elevation, so that's 164.75. So that's kind of a conundrum that we're, we're working with in that situation. The, the flood variance request, as provided by Strand and Associates, included a certification from a licensed professional engineer stating that the building has been designed to be reasonably safe from flooding, which means that while it's not water, it's not dry flood-proof, meaning water can come in to equalize the pressure, which is good. We want to see that, so that the sides don't collapse. It's just not done in a traditional way. So it's a closed system. It's not letting overland water come into the building. It's all tied to the river itself, so water would be coming up inside the building in a closed system capacity. So it's not a traditional measure that's done in floodplain management. They have addressed all of the factors in Chapter 15.44.190E, which are the considerations to keep in mind, and they're part of your packet for what we look at, to ensure the safety of people and property in the city of Davenport, and that won't impact it. And staff has also found that this is a functionally dependent, at, it needs to be at its location within the floodplain. Staff recommend, recommends city plan and zoning commission approve the variance as proposed, and that the variance must receive Iowa DNR concurrence before a floodplain development permit can be approved.
Thank you, Laura. Commissioners, any questions of either staff or Strand and Associates? Commissioner Manus?
Thank you. Laura or the Strand staff, I'm assuming DNR has worked with you as this project has gone along, and you're confident that DNR approval is going to be granted. Is that right?
Yes, I've spoken to the state floodplain manager, and who, it was under his recommendation that we take the route of doing a flood variance, so he is well-informed of what's happening. It is also a DNR-funded project through their state revolving fund, so they are aware of the project as well.
I'm assuming that the end result here is more protection for water quality, correct?
Correct. It will, it will protect water quality, and doing it in a gravity flow capacity, as opposed to pumping the water up to a facility that would be above base flood elevation, this is more fail-safe, because pumps can fail, and then water wouldn't be able to be discharged in the Mississippi River, and we'd have sewer backup problems. So this is the most efficient methodology to take, to do it below base flood elevation.
Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Snyder?
Just a question for my own edification, when it's flooding, is, does it still work?
Yes, it will. Ethan, do you, I don't know if you want to kind of explain how it works. Ethan's told me that there, there's some pressure release valves in the channels in the floor of the building, and so, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that's how the water level will change, so it'll let groundwater up and through water table, and so more water will come in there and it, and it can take on that, that level, it's designed to. Did I get it right, Ethan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, this is Ethan Nien of Strand Associates, I'm the project manager for the construction side of this project, and as Laura's saying, she's correct, the, the building is designed so that if the groundwater levels rise above the elevation of that channel bottom, we have what we call pressure release valves, so they're basically one-way valves that allow the groundwater to come into the building, but no water from the building go out into the groundwater to equalize the pressure. So if we didn't have those pressure relief valves, we would have pressure building up on the bottom of the building with all this groundwater pushing up against the building. So the relief valves allow the pressure to be relieved and enter into the channels where we have our ultraviolet disinfection equipment, so that's just, you can think of them as very powerful lamps that are shining into the water to disinfect it.
Thank you, Ethan, for that clarification. Commissioners, any additional questions? Any remote discussion? Hearing none. Laura, I want to thank you, you and I had quite a conversation last week about the complexity of this project, and I think you did a very good job of simplifying it and making it understandable. I know you were concerned about that, and I appreciate how you put it forward. Ethan, I also appreciate your participation and being available should there have been any questions, along with your additional comment to bolster Laura's comments. Seeing no-
Happy to help.
You bet, thank you. Seeing no other questions, I would like to call for a roll call.
Snyder? Lammers?
Sorry, I wasn't watching. Susan, are you a yes? Yes, she's a yes.
Thank you, thank you. Med?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
And Garrington?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin, that will conclude the other business. I know, Susan, I know you can't speak right now, and I wish you could. I wanted to clarify, you made a statement in your email to me about having questions about a petition that we had already passed and council had already approved regarding the veterinary clinic. I don't know if you thought maybe that was on our public hearing tonight, or if we were going to be discussing it at our next meeting, but I just wanted to clarify to you that that already went through us a couple meetings ago, and, and council has already adopted it, as was in, stated in the council activity. If you'd like to email me or call me when you have your voice back, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about your questions. Are there any additional conversations or questions at this time? Seeing none. We have nobody in the audience that wishes to speak. I would say that I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are officially adjourned, and thank you for your participation.
Thank you, everybody.
Good work, all.